Yeah, it's the next.
On the air, welcome to the town of Kennebunkport Planning Board for October eighteenth. Uh, this is uh available on Zoom as well as uh as well as live here. I guess the first step is to to take attendance and I know Mike West is missing and I also don't see Ed.
Are they online?
So.
I don't know.
I don't think.
I don't think so.
We arranged for it last time, but. Okay, anyway, so the there's two people missing, George, you got to vote again this week. And uh so first thing is the approval of the minutes from our meeting last week where there are. We're going to have to take a vote even if you weren't there, since there's only two of us presently here who were there then. So anyway, if the minutes look good.
They did look good, yeah.
Okay.
I I did the video and I read the minutes.
Yeah, ditto, yeah, yeah, they look.
All right, so you wanna?
So I move to accept the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, and you're in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Okay, so the minutes are good from last time. Okay, the first, the the actually only new item of interest other than. Anyway, the first item is uh Old Cape Road Mizaland Development LLC, Austin Fagan BH2M agent.
Good evening, everyone, um Austin is on vacation, so I I'm filling in for him today, so I'm Steve Blake, I'm also with BH2M. Uh re representing Mizorian Development as as their agent for this project. Do you want me to just give a quick?
Please, I was the only one here for the last presentation.
Sure.
As it turns out, just.
Sure, um, okay, so I'll just use this, I've got a couple of plans here and I think I'll start with the existing conditions plan. So this is the property as it current currently exists right now. Originally, this was all one parcel owned by Hutchins. In twenty twenty-two, this parcel was sold out of that as part of just a lot division that was managed with a code office. Uh so so right now we've got two parcels. What Mizorian Development is proposing to do is um to split this parcel right here. So we, by doing that, we've created a, by state statute, a three-lot subdivision. Uh which is why we're here in front of you requesting, um I guess, I guess right now preliminary subdivision approval. So so we submitted a preliminary subdivision application, I think back in late August for this. So the the lot division is shown on on this plan, so this lot out here is built on. This lot has an existing house on it, we're we're not touching that one, it's staying in current ownership. And this lot right here, Lot One, is what um the applicant is proposing to build on. Uh so what we're proposing is really just essentially a lot split with development of a single-family home on Lot One. Um and that's located right at the intersection of Old Cape Road and Roberts Lane.
Okay, so the the current, uh where where's the curb cut for the new lot going? Going to have frontage on uh?
On Old Cape Road, yes.
So so they will, their driveway will enter from Old Cape Road also?
Correct.
And Hutchins already does.
Correct, yep, yeah, so we're adding one curb cut to Old Cape Road. Um and I'm happy to just, you know, discuss anything else. The only other thing that I didn't want to lose sight of is we also had a few waiver requests as well. For uh high-intensity soil survey, stormwater management plan, like financial capacity statement. And a hydrogeologic assessment.
Yeah, the the financial capacities is the statement that comes in the final, but yeah.
Okay, oh, it is, okay, that's fine. Um and I, we can get that and we might, we might even have it already. It just, when we originally submitted this, um there's not a lot of infrastructure involved, so it seemed like, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be needed. But if it's something that we need for final approval, I think that's that's fine.
Well, I mean. We will, we generally on the waivers, grant the waivers on the preliminary and then mention it again so that it gets onto your final plan. The waivers are listed on your final plan.
Sure.
Uh so we go, we grant, grant them twice, basically.
Okay.
I don't think the 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 other thing you mentioned doesn't go on the plan, it's just these three, the.
Okay, the the financial capacity statement.
The financial capacity isn't hard, isn't something that you have to put on the plan.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, uh beyond that, anyone have any questions?
I've got a question and it's for you and also for the the board in general, just because I haven't seen this one before. I've seen this, but I haven't seen this happen. So in twenty twenty-two, the lot was split in two.
Correct.
And you could wait the time period and then.
Five years, yeah.
Five years and 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 divide again.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-two, you could have come to the board and asked to split this three ways.
That would have been a subdivision.
Then it would have, it would have been a subdivision. So I'm I'm just, and 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 thinking of a of other situations where someone might divide the lot within a five-year timeframe. And then come along and ask for a subdivision of a lot that wasn't included, so and it's just, it's a strange situation, I'm sure it's fine, but I just haven't seen it before.
Yeah.
It does happen, it's it's happened before.
A number of times.
I just don't recall one, that that was the only observation, thanks.
Well, are there any concerns about the spacing between the well, the new well and the new leach field? Cause I see on your existing lot, you've got this hundred-foot uh arc showing the no-well zone.
Yeah, and on Lot One, um there's a kind of a gray hatched area that shows where an appropriate well zone would be um on the left.
So that's a hundred feet from the leach field?
Yeah, it's a hundred feet from um both the, both the um potential leach field locations on Lot One. Uh as well as the existing leach field that's on the current Hutchins parcel.
Okay, and I see there's a, there's, and there's an abandoned well and a foundation, you're gonna remove both of them. Do you have any, is there anything about the history of either of those items that are of interest that would affect this application?
Not, not that I'm aware of, and as as part of this application, we requested a consultation with Maine Historic Preservation Commission. Um and I haven't, we haven't heard anything one way or the other that there's any historic value to that.
And then uh based on, I appreciate the topo lines on here, that is very interesting. So the drainage is sort of east and southeast, I guess, so um are you gonna adjust the contours for a? I guess you're gonna put a house on this, right, is that the idea?
A house on Lot One, yeah.
On Lot One?
Yep.
So what, are you gonna modify, are you, when you level out an area for the house, you're gonna modify the drainage path?
I mean, we'll have to to a certain extent, just to create a flat pad. But I I don't, I don't see that we're going to be drastically changing the the watershed or the characteristics of the watershed in terms of direction of flow.
No wetlands, no vernal pools, that kind of stuff on here?
Uh we did a wetland delineation and we also did a vernal pool study. Um so there are, so the wetlands are primarily isolated to our open space areas, kind of along the western boundary. And there's also, on the original outsale lot, there's also, there's a wetland on that as well, which was um. A, it's a, it's a vernal pool, but it's not a significant vernal pool, so I'm, and I'm, maybe everyone's familiar with what that means, but I'll just explain it quickly. Basically, what happens is if you do a wetland delineation that's not in the breeding season, um you're, you're looking for depressions or things that might be vernal pools. Um and if you find those areas, then a wetland scientist will go back and look for, uh you know, the right number of egg masses for fairy shrimp or um other amphibians. So that process was done as part of this application, it was a vernal pool, but it's not, has no significance, so it's not regulated as a significant vernal pool.
Okay, so on the Pamela Hutchins lot, there's a couple of wetland areas shown, but you're saying there's nothing on the Lot One that needs to be identified as a wetland or vernal pool?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm fine.
Okay, so uh I guess the first thing to do would be to uh get everybody here to agree that those. The high-intensity soil survey, hydrologic assessment and stormwater management are not necessary for this lot subdivision. So I will, so move, do we waive those three?
Second.
Approve.
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 Okay, so we, as I said, well, those will be, come up again on the, on the final.
Yep.
And other than that, um should we, I'm just trying to, you know, write the letter here.
Um, we have a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, I haven't opened it yet, so.
Oh, okay.
Why don't I do that first?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, let me, let me open a public hearing, do we have any uh, any hands raised?
There are no, oh, yes, we do, Jamie Ramsey.
Okay, okay.
Jamie, you can speak.
Hi. Um, so I just wanna make sure, this is the public hearing for Old Cape?
Yes.
Okay, the letter says that the public hearing is gonna be on November second, so I just wanna make sure that is incorrect. There is no, there is no public hearing for Old Cape Road on Wednesday, November second also, correct?
This is the public hearing for a subdivision of Pamela Hutchins land into a separate, a separate lot.
An Old Cape.
On the colder corner of Old Cape and Roberts Lane.
Yep, the top of the letter says October eighteenth, and then the second line says, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, November second. So I think there might be some confusion amongst my neighbors, um and that may be a reason why. So, um.
What is it that you're looking at that said the public hearing would be held on November second?
I was sent a certified letter, a legal notice um from the planning board about this virtual meeting. And at the very top, I can actually stop by the town office tomorrow. It says the meeting at the very top is October eighteenth at six. And then the second line says, the Kennebunkport Planning Board will be holding a public hearing for the following application on Wednesday, November second. Regarding two-three-zero-eight-oh-two, Old Cape Road, Mizonian Development LLC. So that's why I'm here, cause I was like, well, which date is it?
So. Is that the subdivision hearing?
She's got it right.
Cause we have two hearings on this, right?
Michelle, are you aware?
Can you help us with the notice?
I can't tell you what date April put on the notice that she sent out, um I can check with her because we'll have proofs in the office. I know that we'll most likely have another public hearing coming up for the final subdivision plan. But that shouldn't be at our next meeting, that should be.
No, that wouldn't be at the next meeting.
Right, it would be the one following that, most likely.
Well, they have a month after.
Right.
This.
Right, right.
Minimum before they can, so it it wouldn't be until, you know, the the first week in December would be the the first time we could see a.
Right, so my assumption is it was probably dated incorrectly.
Probably said November, instead of December.
Right.
To explain what's going on, this is a two-step process when, on things like this. There's a fir, a preliminary hearing, a preliminary uh plan. Okay, which was presented at the last, uh our last meeting was presented. And what's happening now is the public hearing for that preliminary plan.
I understand.
Okay, so, you know, we would love to hear what you have to say relative to that, to the preliminary plan. So if you wanna proceed ahead and tell us what you have to say about this plan, that's great.
Okay, so I also sent in a letter, I'm not sure if you've seen that, um I sent that back in probably August.
We have not.
Anyway, oh, okay, you don't have that, I sent it to the planning board, no one, no one has that.
I haven't seen that.
No.
No.
In August?
No.
Yep, I sent it in August, um because I was able to follow this online. Okay, so I guess I'll send that over. Okay, so my original question was in the letter, I was wondering why the dri, I I'm Jamie Ramsey, I'm a direct abutter across the way. So basically, the um, the driveway would, um, it would abut me. So for me to back out, this would be directly in my way, for a better, for a lack of a better word. So I was just curious why it isn't exiting off of Roberts Lane or Roberts Road. Look, in looking at the plan, it says a proposed driveway exiting off of Old Cape.
When you say it would be in your way backing out, what, I guess I don't know if I understand that.
Um, I guess that's my other question, is does the planning board ever do a site review? I know it's kind of hard, I noticed in your plans, you have like the Hutchins driveway, but you don't indicate where my driveway is. So it's probably hard for the planning board to see exactly where it is, um.
It it's shown on there, actually, it's it's on the subdivision plan where your driveway is.
Oh, is it?
It is, yeah.
Okay, so when I'm pulling out of the driveway now, either backing in or pulling out, um. It would be, if it's, if it's in the proposed spot, I guess my other issue is, it says proposed, so what does that mean? Could it be closer, could it be further down? When that, that driveway, my driveway, is directly on the curve of Old Cape Road and it goes up. So a lot of times when I'm turning, you know, going west or east, you have a blank spot a little bit. And then if people are coming up the road, when you're going west, they're accelerating. So when I'm backing out, I assume that that driveway is gonna be right in the area. And, you know, sometimes you have people coming right up over there. So if there's gonna be a driveway there, my concern is the lights might be impeding. I have, if they're, you know, like if they're rentals, how much traffic is coming over there? It's just, I don't know, it's, it's a little bit nerve-wracking and I wish there was kind of a site review, if you guys could see the traffic. Um and I did notice that you guys had, um, let me see, my notes, you had a trip finding, let's see, from. A company that said. Sorry, I'm trying to keep multiple things up on my screen. So I guess there was a traffic study done and it was, it doesn't say when it was done, can you confirm when it was done?
I, well, I think what you're looking at was probably something from the preliminary subdivision application. And it's, what it is, is it's a, it's a trip generation calculation for the, for the entire subdivision. So we're, we're looking at these three lots as one project. So the the trip generation that you see in there is for three single-family houses, it's not just for Lot One.
So I guess my, how do they come up with a statement will not create a negative impact on existing roadways? Like, how do you come up with that?
Um, well, a few different ways, so we look at, uh, I mean, I would say the most important thing is to look at site distances. And um, I mean, I can see where your driveway is on here and you're on the inside of that curb. So I think that the site distances on that side of the road are certainly more restrictive than on our side of the road. But there's also, there's a required minimum site distance just based on the um speed limit on the road. That the town dictates, which is how we, how we measured our site distances. And they're, they're appropriate for the, the regulated speed limit on the road.
So, and how did you come up with the assumed peak time for four to, four and six P M? I'm just curious, cause Old Cape Road is really busy, I mean, we see scooters, runners. I mean, it's, it's a main road to get to Cape Porpoise, so how did you come up with the time between four and six?
Um, that is a, it's a, it's a traffic standard, um so that comes from a trip generation manual. So that's the timing that we are, um, that's just, that's the time that they've used, it's, it's an industry standard for measuring trip generation.
Um, and I don't know if you can answer this or if the planning board needs to answer this, but do you need a waiver or a variance for this driveway to exit onto Old Cape Road?
So all that the applicant will need is to work with the code enforcement office for a curb cut permit.
Do we have regulations that uh regulate whether driveways can abut each other?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, I can take a look.
Yeah, cause it seems that that would be something that should be restricted.
And I, I just wanna be clear, so if I'm understanding navigating the the rules, there's two forty dash six dot fifteen, entrance to public ways. This driveway meets that?
I don't, I don't have that in front of me, that's kind of impossible for me to answer right now, I I don't know what that specific section is. Is there, I mean, is there a specific concern with that section?
Uh, yes, let me pull that up.
So I, the other thing too, and and I don't know, Jamie, if you're looking at the current plan, you might not be, but where we're showing the driveway, it's not directly across from your driveway. It is, it is offset.
Uh, it's, it's pretty close, well, the problem is, it says approximate, so I don't know what, you, if you say approximate, that, I mean. In medicine, I can't go and say I gave someone approximately, you know, something of morphine, I need a, I need an exact measurement, right?
I mean, I, I think that what we're trying to do is meet the standards, the subdivision standards for the town. So it's, we're, we're limited on where we can put that driveway on the lot because of the site distances. So it's, it does say approximate, but it's not like, it's not gonna be on the other side of the lot, it's gonna be within that, that general area.
Right, so it's gonna be near my driveway, so, I mean, it's a safety concern because already, that, like I said, the hill is a problem. And the line of sight on the west end is already a problem, in the summer, I have to wait for someone to even let me out, so.
Yeah, I guess I just, I guess I just don't see the safety concern on our side of the road. I mean, I certainly, certainly respect what you're saying and I think being on the inside of that corner, it probably is challenging. But I think on the other side, it's, 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 it's a much better site distance on that side.
What was the answer to not exiting onto Roberts?
Um, I mean, I, we have, we have the ability to to put the driveway on Old Cape Road. And that is the the preference of the developer to have the driveway there, uh just kind of based on how the lot is shaped, what the setbacks are and and the house that he'd like to build.
So the other thing is, has the fire chief been consulted? If there was ever an emergency, like a car accident or a fire, wouldn't it be easier for emergency vehicles? Cause didn't you just put a, the town put a circle turnaround at the end of Roberts? Wouldn't they, wouldn't it be easier to put the driveway at the exit of Roberts then?
Um, I don't think so.
Based on?
I, I'm not saying it would be, I'm not saying it would be easier or harder, I just don't know, I don't understand what the difference would be.
You wouldn't be impeding traffic, the flow of traffic for emergency vehicles?
Should we?
I mean, that's, that's my opinion.
Do you want me to keep going back and forth like this, or I guess how?
No, I would, I was just curious if.
Well, I think we're bringing up a valid concern of a neighbor and she's indicating that the traffic may be heavier than you are indicating in your traffic report for peak hours. I think we can okay the preliminary plan, but with the caveat that you'll go back to the developer. And consider perhaps um whether a driveway could be put on Roberts Road. Or, you know, take another look and the planning board, I think, should dig up that letter if it did come into the planning office. We usually get everything.
Yeah, I, I put it on my list of things to ask April if she had received it, because I have not received that letter.
If not, ask for a second copy of that letter and um we can discuss it further. I think it's a valid concern.
Now, just one more thing I did have on my list is if, you know, you do end up developing it on Old Cape Road. I've noticed that they're currently building a house at the end of the street and they're parked at the Legion. So my concern would be, again, this is going into the winter, I'm hoping that they clear enough space for everyone to park off the street. And I, I just wanna make sure that parking gets resolved far beyond, you know, it starts. Because already, again, there's a huge problem with traffic as it is.
Well, we're hearing your concern.
Okay.
And I think it's something the planning board will look at with the final plan for sure. But I think what has to happen is perhaps you need to go back to the developer and consider, you know, um the traffic on Old Cape Road. And perhaps work with the code enforcement office to see if it is possible to put a driveway off Roberts Road. Or why uh it, it still makes sense to put it off Old, Old Cape Road.
Sure, yeah.
We need a little more information here.
Absolutely.
I think one of the, one of the issues is the uh the proximity of the driveways to each other. If you put a house there and people come off of Roberts Road, it's still going to be the same amount of traffic as if they were coming out of another driveway. But, so it's the proximity of are they opposite each other is one of the larger questions.
Right, well, plus, I mean, backing, if you, person backing out of Lot One is gonna have the same kind of problems that uh.
You're not supposed to be backing onto a road though.
I'd personally rather be coming out on Roberts.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
But in terms of volume of traffic, it's gonna be the same, if you had a house in there. But the question is where the driveway is gonna come out.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so uh what we're going, we're going to request that uh the, the developer or the, that the uh. The gent here discuss with the, with Michael Mizaland, the developer. The concept of really taking into account the traffic situation and, you know, when, when it comes back here, we wanna. If, if you don't decide to come on off of Roberts, we, we wanna hear a very good answer as to why it has to be on.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I guess just, I, just to touch on the traffic situation, I mean, we're not, we're not, we're adding one house to this, to this road, right? We're not expected, we're not evaluating the traffic in the surrounding area, it's not, like, that, that's not, that's not part of our scope that we have. That we're looking at the traffic on Old Cape Road, we're looking at just, you know, one, one house.
Well, I recognize that, but one of the things that um she's saying is that there's already so much traffic on Old Cape Road. You've got two driveways there that are close to abutting each other or abutting each other, basically, you know, opposite each other. And that makes it, that may make it difficult to come out into the traffic that's already there.
And further complicating, yeah.
Yeah, so something to take a look at.
Sure.
I don't think driveways should be opposite each other on a road. I don't know whether we have any regulations along those lines, but um it makes.
Yeah, I, I guess I could understand and I've, you know, certainly seen in the past where if you have a, um, if you had like a private road. Or something that is gonna, you know, generate more significant traffic, that not being, you know, directly in line with someone else's house or someone else's driveway, that I totally understand. I guess I'm just wrestling with, you know, this is, it's, it's one house, it's, it's one driveway. It's not, it, it's not a huge user, it's not, you know, this is being built to sell to a family. There, you know, there's gonna be, they might have two vehicles with a couple trips, so it's just, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're recognizing what, what this is.
We're not, we're not talking about the increase in traffic so much. But you are on a road with, very close to a curve that goes uphill and site distances.
There are already three driveways right here.
Yeah.
And what we're do, adding is a fourth.
Yeah.
If we look at your drawing here.
And we haven't said a thing about short-term rentals, that this possibly could do and then you'd have a Lot One car.
Jamie has raised her hand again and Joe Vogel has also previously had his hand raised, oh, Jamie just.
It's, oh, it's, uh, Mr. Ramsey, Ms. Ramsey is off then?
Ms. Ramsey has lowered her hand.
Okay.
Joe Vogel has his hand raised.
Okay.
Okay. Go for it.
Joe, you can speak when you unmute yourself.
Hey, Heather, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great. So my name is Joe Vogel. I'm at sixty-one Old Cape Road. So just a couple, couple, uh, houses up from this proposed development. Uh, one thing, I wasn't able to find the site plan. Uh, so I'm kind of two questions. One, is the site plan available for review? And two is, what is the size of the lot that is proposed to be split off of the current property?
Uh, we, we could not hear you. I, I can answer the, the second part at least.
I can do the first part.
What's that?
I can do the first part. Um, so the site plan is available online on the planning board page under act, active applications. Um, you'll see that as the BH two M preliminary subdivision plan.
And the, the size of the lot is forty thousand four hundred and seven square feet.
So I guess my only concern right is, you know, that's like basically just above the absolute minimum lot size for our area. Um, you know, as we're looking for the long-term vision for what Old Cape Road will be and what it is now. Um, I don't know if there's any way, but like, it just seems like one acre is kind of small, right? It's as small as they can be. Um, that's a, the existing lot is quite large. And whether or not there would be an opportunity to make this new split off lot, you know, a larger chunk um, of the existing area. That's my only concern.
Could I, do you want me to speak to that or I? Um, I mean, I guess a, a couple of things, um, uh, we're just going by the zoning ordinance. So it's, you know, it's, it's a forty thousand square foot zone. We have more than that. Um, and part of the reason why we're dividing it where we are is there is, there's currently an existing residence on the lot. And we have to respect the, the side setbacks of that structure. So, um, we're, we're really restricted on where we can divide the lot, just based on the existing structure that's already there.
And what are the setbacks from that existing structure then with this new plan?
Uh, side setbacks are fifteen feet.
So that, sorry, just so I understand, that's, this, this new lot has been designed that way? Or this, or this new lot is just going to comply with the regulations which are required to have a fifteen-foot setback?
I think both, but I'm not sure that I understand your question.
Uh, you know what? I'll, I'll take a look at the site plan, um, so that I can get a better idea of exactly what's being proposed. But again, I think maybe the, maybe the comment is for the planning board, right? Yes, this is kind of following the, the regulations for the minimum lot size. But as, with the potential of this lot, you know, further down the road being split into additional lots, right? Managing the density on Old Cape Road will be important. We don't want it to be, I think I'm echoing the sentiments from the previous speaker. We don't want it to be a super dense road. Uh, so just a little bit of that kind of like long-term vision. Um, cause the lot on Old Cape Road does look kind of narrow.
Lo, long-term visions, uh, would require changes to the land use ordinance, which, uh, you know, we, we enforce the, the, at the, on the planning board, we enforce that ordinance. We do not, you know, changes come through town meeting, through, uh, through elections, town elections, it changes that are proposed through the, uh, Board of Selectmen. So if you really want to say, hey, the rest of Old Cape Road, we want to make it acre and a half or whatever, you'd have to go through the, uh, process to actually change the land use ordinance. Not saying you can't do that, but it doesn't, something that we enforce and do not change.
Sure. I hear you. Um, and then just a final, uh, administrative note is that I, I did chat, I think her name is April in the office. And she confirmed that there was a typo on the letter that went out, just as an FYI, that November date was, uh, was supposed to say today.
I think, yeah, the typo was for the, uh, the second hearing, I think, which would be on December sixth, not November sixth.
The next, next hearing will be, on, on this will be related to a final submission of the plan. And we're, we're, but that's, which, uh, is probably the first planning board meeting in December.
Great. Thank you.
And I just, uh, and we have the plans in front of us. But looking at the square footage of the open space and the three lots, there couldn't be any more subdivision of these lots.
Correct. Yeah, there's, well, we've got the open space, which will be deed restricted from any sort of development. But also the remaining land on that lot is seventy-five thousand square feet. So just based on current zoning, it's not divisible. There's not enough land area there. Right.
And part of that's because of the open space requirement. If that were not there, it would be divisible. But because it's a subdivision, we have to have the open space.
It actually would, even, even if we didn't have that conservation area, it still wouldn't be divisible.
It's got to be more than forty thousand. You can't divide.
Well, if I was adding in the twenty-three.
Oh, if you, if you didn't have the open space, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, but that, that open space is actually, it's actually part of that, um, total lot area.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, we got you.
And that's partly there in the regulations to prevent over-density in subdivisions so that we keep open space.
So I'd just like to add two cents on the Old Cape Road. It really is very busy. I mean, the new homeowner might actually prefer to get out, to exit on our Roberts because the, I think the police use this as some kind of a, uh, 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 an easy route to get from their office out to one. So there is a lot of traffic on there from a safety standpoint. You know, even if you come out straight ahead, they may prefer to go onto a less, less active road, is all we're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that for sure. Yep. Um, and, and I, I don't know. I mean, we're happy to, you know, meet out there with, with Jamie as well. And, you know, we could even stake out where a potential driveway might be, but we can manage that independently.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Jamie has raised her hand again.
Okay. Go for it.
Am I muted? Am I good? Okay. Sorry, I'm not good at this. I just wanted to encourage the planning board. I know you don't have to do a site visit, but if you could just maybe drive up, you know, towards my house and you can see kind of maybe approximately where the driveway is going to be. And if you can just, you know, look where my driveway is, look where my neighbor's driveway is and just envision another home there. And if it was a rental or if it was a family with, you know, teenagers with two cars, four cars, um, you know, and just compare that, you know, turn around and then look at Roberts Road. If they just came out that way, it would be a lot easier. Again, I agree with what you just said, but even if you could just take that drive sometime during the day in the morning when it's, you know, commute time, um, I think that would really help your perspective. Cause I, I'm not sure looking at paper really, really helps. So thank you.
Thank you.
So how are we doing on raised hands?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm getting the feeling that we want to put a letter. Uh, I have a letter here that says, the usual letter, that says we have approve, done a preliminary approval of your, we've approved your preliminary plan and these are the waivers. And what we need to have is some wording in there that says that we're concerned about, uh.
Because of concerns of traffic and driveway openings, uh, developers should consider a driveway on Roberts Road rather than Old Cape Road.
Or replacement of place at a different spot. If it's farther down, just not as opposite to that.
Yeah. Cause I mean, there are, it's not just two driveways across from each other. It's four.
Four, four, four.
Four very close to each other there already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so it's more than just one.
Yeah.
You know.
Sure. No, I, yeah, I understand. Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, I'll put a, that's, so we're basically approving the preliminary plan. And I will draft a letter and send it past you guys to
Okay.
To get the, the exact words, but you understand the concept. The concept, the letter will be addressed to, to whom? To.
Mizouin Development? No.
Okay. So do I, I send, I send the letter to, uh?
We're gonna send to the agent?
The agent, it's, oh, that's.
Austin Fagan?
Do I send to the, yeah, that, that's fine. So, yeah, Austin and I work together. We're, we're BH two M. So we're the authorized agent for Mizouin Development.
So I'll send it to the authorized agent.
Yep, that works.
Not to the, not to the developer.
Sure. Yep.
Yep.
Works for us.
That's easy. All right. So, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks. I appreciate your time. Is there a formal vote on?
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna make a formal vote. I'm just discussing the.
Cool. Yeah, yeah. Gotcha. Yeah, yeah. Okay. I thought you were telling me to leave, so.
No, not quite.
No.
Okay. So, uh.
You want me to make a motion?
Make a motion, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plan, uh, and we've already approved the waivers. Um, and to put in, um, uh, note that the developer consider, uh, the placement of the driveway either on Roberts Road or, uh, on Old Cape Road in consideration of the traffic in other driveways, something like that.
Yeah, very good.
Well said.
Second.
Yeah, motions with us and other, something like that.
Okay. I'll help you word it if you want.
We're gonna word, word it offline, but that, that's, you get, you know.
Sure, absolutely.
And you'll get the letter. And, uh, so anyway, so we're, motion is to approve the preliminary.
He seconded.
Yes.
I approve.
Approve. Did you second it?
I said, I seconded it, yes.
Okay. Approve.
Approve. Approve.
Approve.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. So that, we'll get this to you so that, and you didn't have a month, uh, after that before you can submit the preliminary, the final plan anyway. So it gives you a little time to.
So we have to wait, I, we have to wait a month before we can submit for final, is that?
That's, that's the, that's in the, in the.
Okay, yeah, I just did.
Subreg, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So we'll get this out to you this week.
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, so about a month from now, we'll consider the final plan. So he could submit it anytime he wants.
If he submits it, we will see it.
See it, yeah.
Yep.
It has to be, it's, it's going to probably be in the beginning of December or the second time in December.
Yeah, we can touch base about the applicant.
Timing of, of, cause once we get the, once we get it, it has to get noticed. The, the.
Sure.
Two weeks.
The, uh, hearing of it at the planning board has to get noticed and that's got another week built in somewhere.
So we would likely submit our final application. We'd have a meeting where the board would, um, review it and accept it as complete potentially. And then a follow-up meeting for.
Once we, once you.
Another public hearing.
There would be a public hearing.
Okay.
And then.
Sure.
And ideally we would approve it.
Okay.
So, all right. Well, I'm going to put that draft letter together.
Okay.
And so that brings us to item two in the.
Thank you.
In, in the plan.
Final item two.
Which, uh, is the finding of facts for the, uh, let me see that. Please, no order this, so I can read it right. Okay. This is item two, three, eight, oh, one seaside hotel associates DVA, Non-Antum Resort. And this is a finding of facts.
Right.
Unfortunately, I don't believe we have a, a, uh, notary public here to, to get our, to notarize our signatures so we could actually give you a copy.
I've been saying that. Yeah. I was telling Michelle she needs to become a notary.
And then I said, I've been saying that.
I see. Okay. Anyway, so proceed.
All right. This is Kenny Bunkport Planning Board findings of fact and decision on the application of Seaside Hotel Associates doing business as the Non-Antum Resort. The application is number two, three, oh, eight, oh, one dated August sixteenth, two, oh, two, three for repair of Non-Antum Resort's back lawn in the riverfront zone. Following site plan reviews pursuant to the Kenny Bunkport land use ordinance held on September sixth, two thousand twenty-three and September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, and a public hearing held on October fourth, two thousand twenty-three, the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board makes the following findings of fact and conclusions and renders the following decision subject to the conditions enumerated below. The applicant and owner of record is Seaside Hotels doing business as the Non-Antum Resort here in after the Non-Antum. The Non-Antum is comprised of two lots. The subject property is located at ninety-five Ocean Ave and is identified as map eight, block one, lot thirteen, and consists of three point five four acres. The other locate, lot is located at ninety-eight Ocean Ave and is identified as map lot, map eight, block nine, lot ten, and is not the subject of this application. The Non-Antum authorized Tina Hewitt Gordon, manager, to represent the hotel as its agent. The owner has demonstrated a legal interest in the property by, by providing a copy of a warranty deed recorded in York County Registry of Deeds, book seven, oh, nine, six, pages one twenty-one through one twenty-four, dated June twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-four. Ninety-five Ocean Ave, the subject property, is located in the riverfront zone. The Non-Antum seeks approval to repair the back lawn of the resort, which has deteriorated and subsided due to poor drainage, as well as repair a portion of the seawall. An application for a Natural Resources Protection Act permit, NRPA, has been submitted to the Maine Department of Environmental Protection for the project. The Non-Antum presented information that described the current state of the lawn and indicated the work to be done included removal of topsoil, inspection of the existing concrete chambers under the lawn, addition of sand and then sod, and repair of a small fifteen-foot section of seawall. This will require five hundred and forty cubic yards of material for repair of the lawn and possibly some seawall material. Pursuant to the requirements of Article ten, ten A of the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decision, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings, which would otherwise compel denial, denial. The following have been approved, uh, A through, oh, all of these findings have been approved with a finding of yes, except for C, F, G, I, L, M, O, and P, which are findings of not applicable. Any negative finding by the board means that the application has been denied. The application is otherwise complete. Conclusions, Articles ten, ten A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more identified findings that would otherwise compel denial. And as noted above, the board makes no such findings. Decision, the site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any, pursuant to Article ten, eleven and ten, twelve E. The applicant pursuant to ten, twelve E shall notify the planning board prior to the transfer of rights to construct an approved project. The applicant must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the York County Registry of Deeds before any permit may be issued or before any construction activity may commence. The applicant shall also provide the town Kenny Bunkport a copy of the approved MDEP permit prior to commencement of any work. The applicant shall comply with all terms and conditions of the town of Kenny Bunkport ordinances as well as the Maine DEP approvals dated October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, I move approval of, uh, that finding of fact.
I second it.
Okay.
I approve.
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 Approve. Okay. So we'll get it signed off and, uh, we'll be done. So I'll take another motion.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think we all approved that, so we're adjourned.
Can you do that? Just like go through the, ah, ABC. Just like go through the, yeah, ABC.